So we will call meeting to order as we reconvene and do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone here for a public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to item number four. First reading of the Stormwater Utility Ordinance. Chip Sawyer was important.
Good evening. Thank you. So I think there's definitely some important new information, but also a lot being brought before you tonight that you've seen before or that you might be expecting. We've talked before about a stormwater utility to fund our stormwater-specific activities that we need to start doing in the city, mostly mandated, but by and large water pollution controls that we really ought to be doing. The city and the town actually explored a stormwater utility together back in 2009, so this has been a long time coming. We know a lot more now than we did then about what our requirements are and what we're expected to do. Some of the regulatory pieces of the ordinance brought before you tonight, we actually did a first reading on those in December, but we've combined it all into one ordinance that covers the stormwater regulations that we have yet to adopt, and then the utility itself, setting that up and setting it up to collect the revenue that will be needed for the services. So in many cases, all of that is bundled together for municipalities, so we bundled it back together for a first reading tonight. I would just start with the memo first that I wrote for you. Starts out by talking about the things that our MS4 permit requires us to do. Now, the MS4 permit's issued to us by the state, but it's carrying out requirements that come from the EPA and the Clean Water Act. The EPA is delegated to the state, making sure these things happen in Vermont, because only the state can regulate some of the important pieces that the EPA can't, namely farms. So what the state then does is it puts together this MS4 permit, and it's issued it to some of the communities much like ours that have separated stormwater systems and have a population of a certain size. These five things I listed here are the biggies in the permit. There are a few other things in there that we need to do, but we need to adopt stormwater management ordinance that regulates erosion and runoff from new construction. We need to adopt rules in a program that find places where sources of pollution are connected to our stormwater system, and we need to find them and eliminate them. Our stormwater system should only be carrying stormwater. Those catch basins, they should only be carrying regular water from rain that flows down the street. People shouldn't be pouring things into them. In a historic city like ours, we find that someone's sewer service is still hooked into a stormwater service that used to be a sewer service, but we converted it to stormwater. We go looking for those things. We call that the IDDE program. Number three is we need to increase and record our street sweeping and catch basin cleaning activities. And I would say that just through that programmatic operation, we can likely earn a lot of credit towards the phosphorus reductions we need to make. We're currently participating in a grant that is learning more information about how much we can claim just by doing more street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. And leaf pickup might actually be something that we explore in the future. Number four, we have to provide outreach and technical assistance to property owners concerning stormwater. Number five is a capital item, and it's an item that's likely going to require engineering, construction, debt service. And we need to construct stormwater treatment facilities that get in between our stormwater system and the brooks and accomplish a couple goals. They need to reduce the amount of water that hits our brooks all at the same time during a storm. They need to hold some of that stormwater back during a rain event so that it then gets to Stevens Brook and Grace Brook and Rug Brook gradually. We also need to reduce phosphorus in stormwater before it gets to the brooks. And as you know, once it gets to the brooks, it gets to the bay. There are other ways that pollution in the city can reach St. Albans Bay, but the brooks are the big avenues. We've done some conceptual planning for the treatment facilities we need to build for flow reduction for Stevens Brook and Rug Brook. We've had that information for a few years now. And I stress it's conceptual. So the consultants put together a total budget of $5 million for the flow restoration projects. But as you probably know, once we get into the final engineering, the permitting, the land control, the possible land acquisition, you know those projects, the costs will likely increase. We will also have to come up within a year a plan for any additional treatment we might have to build specifically for phosphorus. The state will be finalizing or changing our MS4 permit to insert the phosphorus requirements in the next few months. Then we will come up with a phosphorus control plan, and then we will know what treatment facilities we need to build for phosphorus, and then how much phosphorus we could reduce just through operations like street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. So the capital costs are well into the millions. And we've known for some time that the city council, and it's certainly staff's recommendation, that we find a special revenue source for these new operations and these new projects rather than funding it all out of the general fund. Do we have to do these? You know, we have a permit requirement to do these things. It's sort of a given that we'll do all these things, but you know, we should talk about, certainly since we're looking at a price tag, what happens if we don't? Well, you know, if we don't accomplish our water quality goals under our MS4 permit under the schedule that we're given, you know, we'll be in violation of the permit. We can be fined. We can be subject to civil suits. We could be subject to court orders and consent decrees that will tell us how to do our own, you know, do our own business here in the city in terms of water quality. And another way to look at this is that we're really, this is a huge step. However we fund this, however we fund these activities, this is a huge step toward cleaning up St. Albans Bay. We'd certainly be doing our part. So quite frankly, I think we have to do these things. I don't think we have much choice. These are all new activities. These are all new rules. So the proposed ordinance sets up the rules and creates the program to fund the activities. At the top of page two, the items we need to do if we're going to go down this route is to adopt the ordinance, which would also create the utility. And then in a council meeting by majority vote, we would eventually set a stormwater utility budget. We have drafted that for you tonight. We would, the council would set a stormwater equivalent residential unit and a fee. We have a draft of that for you tonight. Approve a fee credit manual. We have great models of that to use, and we'll talk a little bit about what that means tonight. And then approve erosion guidance for construction projects. We may just use the state, the state rules, but we might put our own little, you know, adjustments on them for the city. Looking at the ordinance itself, before we look at the ordinance, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yeah.
Just to let them clear on this ordinance. So the stormwater utility program is going to generate revenue, and that revenue is going to offset anything that we would otherwise would have to pay through the general fund. And that's a benefit to us to have the stormwater utility paying for these in the general fund because there are some properties that don't contribute into the general fund. Is that correct? So this stormwater is going to entail everybody, not just somebody?
Yeah. So to answer your question, it is true that everyone's going to be sharing the load under the model we propose, and is the model used for most stormwater utilities is that every property pays. But really, the reason for that is, is that this is a fee for service, just like your water bill, just like your sewer bill. Every property needs water. Every property then creates pollution through, you know, sewer. Well, your stormwater is also a form of pollution. Your wastewater pollution is in the pipes, but your stormwater pollution comes from the fact that everyone's responsible for their property, and everyone's responsible for what happens once rain hits your property, and then what happens next.
Okay. So that gets us so that we have everyone paying their fair share. Now, the state is also coming up with some protocol where the properties in Vermont are going to end up paying for these types of things as well. How do we prevent or are we able to prevent us from having to pay not only the municipality, but also the state? Is the state going to give a credit? Is the state going to give a reduction for the communities that have their own stormwater utility? Are there going to be a reduced price for them outside of everybody else? Or is this going to be in addition to that?
So I think we would look for those opportunities to at least streamline what people are paying based on their property for stormwater, whether it's to the state or the city or any other form. One of the assumptions we're making, and we've basically been, you know, there's been a lot of assurance coming from the state, from the administration, from the Department of Environmental Conservation, that there will be support from the state for us for what we're doing. Certainly, there will be support from the state for our capital projects, but there will be a local match. So we are assuming that there will be state support for our capital projects, but that we will still need to raise local money for our share. What I assume is that when we use, if the council creates a stormwater utility and we are using that funding for debt service and other related costs for the capital projects, we're likely only paying half of the actual cost. The other half will come from the state, like with any grant. You know, normally you get a state grant for a transportation project, they pay, many times with the federal funding, they pay 80%, we pay 20. We have to raise our 20%, of course. What we've been told to expect is a 50-50 split for the stormwater projects. The city, the city's going to have to raise money no matter what, so that's why we're recommending the utility to you tonight. Now, we don't yet know how the state would raise its portion, and I think that's going to, based on what we've seen around here, I think that's going to take a couple more If the state adopts a per parcel fee that looks a lot like what we might come up with our utility, it's possible we could be in a position where someone gets a bill from the state, and then they also see the stormwater fee for the city on your water and sewer and stormwater bill. If there's a way for us to avoid that duality, if there's a way for us to use our utility to collect the state portion just to make it easier for people, I mean, we'll certainly, we've been active, and all the MS4 communities have been active in Montpelier about making sure that our interests are being protected and our rate payers are going to be treated as fairly as possible. So we'll continue to have that presence and look for those ways to avoid what I think, what you're saying we're trying to avoid is...
So we don't know that for sure yet. For my example...
We don't know for sure.
Highgate doesn't have a stormwater utility. They're getting charged X by the state per parcel. St. Albans City now gets charged X by the state for the parcel, but we're also paying Y for our stormwater share into the city. You don't know what the...
But it's not, but it's not going to be like our residents or our rate payers are being double charged. The city portion will raise our local match. The state portion would raise what goes toward the state program that then comes back to us as grants or other financial support.
Okay. I have two more quick ones. The administrative officer that you talked about in the ordinance, is that going to be, is that position a position just for the administration of the stormwater utility? And is, are the fees going to come from the stormwater utility revenues?
Yeah, I think so. I left that term vague on purpose so that, like, one city staffer might be appointed to be the administrative officer for this stormwater function, and another city staffer could be appointed to serve another stormwater function. You know, Public Works is going to be more active in the IDDE activities. Dave Southwick in the Property Services Office might be more active in the other new construction regulation. But the intent of this utility is that it would contribute to those extra duties that those city staffers would be putting into the stormwater program.
Specifically, the administrative officer that's talked about in the operations ordinance, is that a single person that is going to be involved in just this stormwater utility?
No, we don't see it as a new staff member.
Okay, so it's just a number of people that's already in our...
So you know how Dave Southwick has been told, okay, Dave, you're the zoning administrator, and now you're also the assessor. There might be a point at which we say, Dave, we need you to be, to also be in charge of this part of the stormwater.
That's not very clear in the ordinance, because the ordinance talks about us, the city manager or the city council actually hiring somebody or approving somebody. And the last is, the benefit of the stormwater, or one of the benefits of the stormwater, would you agree, is to take some relief or take some stress away from the water systems and the wastewater systems? Is that correct?
Yes. I know, I think, yes.
Now, should, now, which is going, I just want to ask this very gently and softly. Shouldn't we be looking to those two funds to contribute to the stormwater utility? Shouldn't we be looking at those two funds to say, look, by doing this, we're saving this, therefore you should be contributing this? Has that been looked at? Are we looking at that? Are we going to look at that?
You could bake that into the next budget process. The way that would come up, I would think, is the debt service on a project. So if we're doing a big CSO project, for instance, that has a stormwater component and a wastewater component, then they would both cost share on the debt service. The challenge is that our CSO combines sewer overflow goals and our stormwater goals conflict. Because you want to solve the CSO, you want to get more water out of the pipe, which increases your flows.
Every year, we budget, though. We're budgeting those two enterprise funds based on the things that are happening today. This is going to alleviate some problems there, all right, which is going to end up as cost savings to those funds. And so shouldn't there now be a budget item in those, within those two funds that are contribution to stormwater utility?
Or it might more likely be a reduction.
Right, but then reductions in those...
Reduction in their budgets.
Right. But influx revenue into this one?
We could look into that.
Okay, okay. Because...
But for instance, you could, we could look at it as, you know, Public Works, the road crews always dealt with the catch basins and the street cleaning. Those are so closely linked to stormwater that they're, that they're being brought on, and it's the utility that could be the funder of those activities going forward. And so we no longer need to fund that activity through the general fund, Public Works budget.
So I wouldn't want to see a budget coming to us, you know, next year saying, well, we have a $10,000 cost savings because of the stormwater utility, when we wouldn't, we probably should be saying, well, instead of doing that, shouldn't we be earmarking that money to go, diverting that into the stormwater utility, thereby saving the rate payers from having to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you know what? The stormwater utility gives the council another tool to raise the revenues from where you think it's appropriate to get these services done. You could, what, you could pull the funding from, you know, the, whatever sources you want, plus now the dedicated stormwater fee.
Well, as long as everyone has an eye to that, that's, that's fine with me.
But Tim, theoretically, the people that have more impervious surface will be paying more through this than they would in general.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
So saving that little bit in the general fund may not, will save the person that has a lot of grass, will save them more than a person that has a lot of...
But if the, if the treatment plant is going to save money on hydraulic loading because the water now is being taken out of the treatment plant sewer and going into this, the MS4, whatever we set up...
But the MS4 wants us to put less water into the brooks.
Right. Well, not, but not more into the plant. We're going to put, we're going to put water somewhere, but it's not going to be more into the plant. It's going to be taken out of those pipes. So the hydraulic discharge is going to be less. That means there's going to be an effective cost savings because there's going to be less chemicals, there'll be less treatment for, you know...
And like Dom said, as the wastewater fund pursues the CSO projects, we are going to have to keep up with the increased stormwater flows that are now in the separated system, not being treated at the wastewater plant, but the stormwater utility will be the tool we can use to make sure that every time we do a CSO project and fix the pollution at the overflow site, that we're not creating more water pollution through stormwater. We can create the stormwater treatment facilities that will take care of the stormwater piece.
But I don't want to, we don't want to scare the taxpayer into thinking, my God, we've got an additional tax coming your way because of the stormwater, you know, management ordinance or this stormwater treatment utility, because we're going to have some cost savings and some shifting of revenues that's going to help, you know, alleviate those concerns.
Yeah, now, now we're in the role of creating something new if the council decides to go that way. The next budget cycle, we can provide a much more coordinated picture of who's doing what and how much it will cost.
We put a lot of money aside every year in those two budgets for capital expenses, $100,000, $200,000. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to keep doing that if we need to divert money for here in order to lessen the impact upon people who are going to be charged for getting into the system.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm just trying to keep it. I don't want people getting nervous about what we're doing. They shouldn't be getting nervous about what we're doing. There's enough people up here that are going to watch out to make sure that the costs are down as low as possible. And it's not just going to be a flat out, here's what we, you know, you have some property, now you're going to be paying us. We're going to be looking for the efficiencies to help people through. That's what I'm trying to get across, because this is important.
Yep.
Because everyone thinks, oh, my God, I'm going to be taxed more.
Anyone else have questions?
Just one quick thing, Chip. This is some examples of projects that might go through to help, like, treat the water before it goes in the brooks or lessen the amount that comes in. Are we talking like retention ponds?
Yeah, less that. You know, retention ponds aren't very popular anymore. But yeah, when we say stormwater treatment facility, it's not, it's not a bunch of metal pipes and generators and, you know, things you see at the wastewater treatment plant. It all looks natural. It's what you call a gravel wetland. It's, can sometimes double as a nice place to hang out. Green stormwater infrastructure should also use. It could, it could look like a rain garden on steroids. And detention ponds or things that look like detention ponds may be used here and there, but it would really look like a large, an area, a large area of some integrated ponding areas, some gravel, a lot of grass, some shrubs, things that get in between the water and the brooks, built to fill up during a storm and then slowly trickle out, you know, and have that water get into the brooks at a more reasonable rate.
Or even groundwater recharge.
Or groundwater recharge, exactly. Infiltration, yes.
There's a, I visited one in Syracuse of the green sort of wetlands, and I know there's many examples out there, but that one is very interesting. My quick question was, does this get phased in and over what time period?
So if you look at the ordinance, and that's a good segue, but, you know, at the very end, what's currently proposed is that this starts on July 1st, 2018, fiscal year.
Everything at the same time?
Everything at the same time. We do, we do need at least to read the chapters for the chapter headings, brief summary for the first reading. Chapter one has your general findings, purpose and definitions. Chapter two specifies that there is an administrative officer who would be a person appointed. It says appointed. It does not imply that we're hiring someone new. The city manager could appoint an existing city staffer.
Take a look at that along with page seven, line three, four, and five, when you're looking at the update of the next one, okay? Just, not tonight, but just take a look at it, because it looks like there's two conflicting things going on there. But just, on the one hand, you have the council doing it. On the other hand, you have the city manager doing it. But just in your next rewrite, just look at that and just make sure that's what you, that's what you really mean.
Yeah, the designated enforcement officer, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think...
Just take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll provide some more information on that. Chapter three covers the illicit discharge and stormwater connection, the illicit discharge and detection and elimination program. It's likely that consultants would be used for a lot of that work. Public Works will help out, but you start at, you start at the end of the stormwater system. You look for any chemicals that aren't supposed to be there, and you basically follow it up the line until you find the source. And the sources could be, could be anything. It could be a floor drain in a business that's accidentally connected to the stormwater system. We need to show the state, we need to report to the state that we're testing, we're following, and we're finding these things, and we're fixing them. Chapter four, monitoring of discharges, is just really linked to the IDDE program, how we monitor, how we report, making sure we can get onto properties to find the issues. Chapter five is erosion and sediment control. These are rules that construction projects will have to follow in the city to basically make sure that if you're digging and moving earth, that the sediment doesn't travel off your property into our waterways or into our streets. It's going to be an extra step for some permits that come through the permitting office. There are exemptions for gardening. It's not, it's not every single, it's not like every time you dig a doghouse, you need to put up silt fencing. There are square footage limits under which you're exempt. But it's all, it's really, these are good ideas that people should be doing with their construction projects anyway. Chapter six, post-construction stormwater management. Basically, this rule would affect any project that is disturbing more, an acre or more. That's not many projects in the city, but it is, you know, it's an, it's an important rule to start following, that these larger projects will have to look at making sure, making sure the new stormwater off of their project is treated adequately, following the same state rules that you'd have to follow if you were creating more than an acre of impervious. And that, that's a requirement that comes out of our MS4 permit. Chapter eight is just a brief chapter on the management of construction waste and debris. Chapter nine deals with enforcement and fines. The city can pursue disconnections from the stormwater system, stop work orders. It's the typical enforcement you'd find with a permitting program. We can use the judicial bureau or the state courts. Chapter 10 is the stormwater system user fees. Chapter 10 would create the, the piece of this that feels like a utility, that is, that is collecting fees and spending them to fulfill our stormwater requirements. We've talked about some of the pieces of this before. What an equivalent residential unit or... We've talked about some of the pieces of this before, what an equivalent residential unit or ERU is. Basically, an ERU is commonly used for stormwater utilities. It's used by all the utilities in the state thus far. You find your average square footage of impervious on a single-family home or duplex that's under 10,000 square feet in size, you know, so those are the big ones that are way out, outliers, way at the top. And you set it up so that those single-family homes and duplexes are only paying one ERU. And then all other properties are paying a multiple number of ERUs based on how much impervious they have on their lot. So based on our analysis of single-family homes and duplexes that have less than 10,000 square feet of impervious, the ERU would be 3,000 square feet. And the vast majority of single-family homes and duplexes in the city would pay, would be, would be allocated, assigned, one ERU. So then you take your ERU and you come up with a fee per ERU that's raised. The fee we're proposing is 200, uh, is $2.50, $2.50 a month, which would cost $30 per home, um, for your single-family home or duplex, unless it's on the larger side. We came up with that, because if you look on the memo, the last page is our stormwater budget for the, for, uh, the first year, um, just under 156,000. So we took all of the properties in the city. Our consultants assigned the impervious using GIS data from, uh, from the NAPES program and from the DEC. When you looked at all the total ERUs in the city and the need to raise 156,000 dollars, that's how we came up with the $2.50 ERU per month. The budget you've seen before. And there's a table that shows that, um, you know, there are 1,600 one-ERU residential properties in the city. They would each pay $30 a year under this proposed utility. Then there are some residential properties with two or more ERUs. There are 166 of those, give or take. They would pay $60 a year if they have two, or obviously they'd pay, um, more depending on how many ERUs they have. Most impervious cover in the city is owned by, on a commercial property, which we define as anything having more than four residential units, or certainly a commonly recognized commercial use that's non-residential. The median number of ERUs that a commercial property has is three. The average number of ERUs that a commercial property has is nine.
The $2.50 that you have, $2.50 a month that you have on there is only a, um, an amount that is billed based on this budget.
Correct.
And that can change depending on what we budget later on.
Correct.
And at the last meeting when we were talking about this, we said that, uh, there was gonna be some thought given to, um, having a provision in any ordinance that would be able to use credits to offset amounts.
Yes.
But I, I, did I see something in here that said something about that?
Forgot to mention that. I mentioned it at the beginning, but when I was talking about the ordinance. So what is common for a stormwater utility is, uh, a method to get credits toward your ERUs if you're treating your impervious. Your impervious is the basis of how many ERUs you're assigned. However, if you're adequately treating the stormwater for any of your impervious, it should reduce your ERUs. The goal here is to reduce water pollution in the city. So if someone is treating impervious on their property, they should be recognized for that. We, what's also common is that no one can zero out their ERUs, um, because we still need the program to exist, the technical assistance, the outreach. There are some aspects provided for this fee that are provided for every property regardless of your impervious. But we, um, we'll prepare for the council a manual, which is pretty commonly used by other utilities, that would delineate what we expect to see for the treatment, how we wanna see it proven, and then how, how many ERUs you could get reduced. What we will propose, what I was thinking of proposing at the moment, is that it would be, basically, if you can show, so if you have 10, uh, 10 square, um, 10,000 square feet of impervious on your lot, and you can show us you're treating 5,000 of it, your ERUs would be cut in half. It's likely, it's unlikely that we let someone cut their ERUs by more than half, anyway. But I'm wondering about, in our case, maybe going to 75%. So the, so that you could cut up to 75% of your regular ERUs if you can show that you're treating at least that much of the impervious on your lot. You know, and, and the other reason why no one would be able to zero out their ERUs is because there's a cost just associated with putting the time into figuring what your credit is. And someone who's treating the land on the property would be expected to maintain that treatment over time. We'd have to verify that. But those are, um, uh, there are great, great examples out there that we'll just steal from other stormwater utilities on how to do that. So that would be, be one of the aspects of this program that doesn't need to be adopted as an ordinance. It would be adopted as a policy during a council meeting. And that could also be updated whenever the council wants, just as the stormwater budget can be updated, the ERUs and the fees can be updated. There will also be a process for someone to come in and say, "I don't agree with my ERUs. There's no way I have that much impervious on my lot." So we'll go out and we'll take a look, and we'll use permitting records, assessing records. We'll go out with a measuring tape, and if, you know, there, there can be a way that people can update their ERUs with what's on the ground. And also, as we get new satellite data every once in a while, the city should probably do a full, it's almost like a reappraisal, full update of, of the impervious data layers, utility-wide. We'll certainly make sure we don't make any big mistakes when we do that, but, um, that's how that would work.
I think that the $2.50 is very reasonable, and, um, based on 156,000 dollars, but I can foresee that 156,000 dollars going up in years to come. And with that, um, I would, um, make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chapter 7, reserve for?
I think it, it was strategically put there by the consultants who originally, um, drafted this for us. I figured we'd leave it in. You never know if you end up wanting, needing to add something, and you wish you could put it in the middle of an ordinance, because it, because it deals with those programs, so...
Chip, two things, uh, so the city would be paying in as well for their properties?
Yes.
So no one's exempt?
Correct.
The other one was, would, uh, a standard city block downtown be one ERU? Is that what the expectation would be?
You mean a, a block building?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, typically, a downtown building typically could be, easily be just one ERU, because it's just a small lot. Your impervious is really just the roof of the building.
Right.
Any other questions for Chip? Motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Chip, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we recess in the liquor control, can we amend the agenda to remove item number 12?
That's a motion on second.
Hold on.
12?
Is that the one?
No, 11.
11, oh, sorry, 11.
You could do that, but Tom's gonna have a meltdown.
Number 11, sorry.
That was a motion by Chad, tagged in by Tim. Any comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. 11 is removed from the agenda.
Motion to recess, uh, for liquor control. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So we will recess for the liquor control meeting. Curry, come on up, please.
Hi, everybody. Um, so tonight I have 12 liquor license renewals, everyone. Um, to update on the liquor license violations of last time. We had, I had sent out a letter to appear to South Main Grocery. Um, when I spoke with, uh, the gentleman at South Main Grocery, he mentioned he would not be able to appear tonight. He would've traveled. Um, and I had mentioned that I would just bring this to the board and inform everyone of this.
When's his, when's the, when's his liquor, current liquor license expire?
I believe it's at the end of the month.
Can we do a temporary renewal on that one for 30 days, get us to the next council meeting?
Well, we have a special meeting the 30th, right?
Yep.
He'd have to do it overnight, though. He'd have to drive it the next day.
Yeah, plus I'm gonna be in Florida.
So your recommendation is what?
First, uh, 30-day renewal gets them up to our main meeting.
How do they pay for that, though? Do they have to pay twice?
Um, I don't think so. I think if we just do an extension, we can figure out the, the math of it.
I'll play it, okay. That works for me.
Are you, that's a motion, Tim?
But it's not a motion, just, uh, does that be a motion? I don't think it has to be one. I just think we'll agree on it.
It's not on the list to approve, so...
Yeah, I mean, we've done that in the past. That's what we've done in the past. We've just extended, uh, until people have done it.
Council's fine with that?
Yes.
So, so we'll do that. Curry?
Okay. That being said, um, in my best efforts to contact and, you know, obtain all the necessary documentation for all of these, there are three outstanding establishments that weren't able to get in their applications or fees. Um, so I'm not sure how the procedure would go for a special meeting, um, of council to have those signed. It's three that are left.
Treat them similar.
What's that?
We extend them for a month and then...
Yeah.
What are the three?
South Main Grocery, The Grind Cafe, and, uh, honestly, I was expecting to have the Old Foundry at one of Federal End today. They do have their checks here. They just needed a couple more business owners to sign the actual license. One was only present, so she went back to go get it signed. And so I've been working on that.
The, the normal protocol is that, you know, when we approve them, we approve them based that they're gonna have all things, yeah, and all the requirements done. And then you make sure they get all the requirements done, and then you sign off on the application.
Okay.
And that's the way, that's the way Sue used to do it.
You're saying that, you're saying as opposed to having everything upfront?
Yeah, so as, I mean, we have, like, the, the, the A through K tonight, we will approve them pending the complete, a complete application.
Okay.
And they need to know that if they don't get the application completed, then they don't get to renew their license. And I think that kind of is kind of the driving force to get them to come in and get their stuff done.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't wanna, you know, have 25 meetings, you know, because of someone not coming in.
So do we need to sign something?
Yeah, and we've done that.
So we'll move, so all three will be, uh, signed off, and we'll deal with it in May, May night.
Yeah.
Um, and the next minutes, the minutes of the panel? Sorry, I don't know if I take a lead on, on going down the agenda or...
Actually, the mayor does.
Okay.
We're new to this. So everyone received the, uh, minutes of last meeting in your packet?
Well, uh, I'm, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, A through K is renewed. We renew those licenses pending a completed application to the city clerk.
So there's three that are not on that list, too. So you got South Main Grocery, The Grind, and the Old Foundry.
Second. Second by Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? So moved. Now we'll move to the minutes. So in the packet, you have your minutes from March 12th. Entain a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
I have a question. There was somewhere on here that I read...
Can I get a second?
Yes, uh, a second.
Second, second by Chad.
So there was somewhere on here that I read that Tim wanted both South Main Grocery, I thought I read it, South Main Grocery and Hometown here, but I thought it was just South Main Grocery.
It was just South Main Grocery.
Okay, so please change that. I wish I could...
Thanks, Chad.
I also did want to point out, I might not have been clear when I did mention it, um, on part D. Yeah, South Main Grocery did not come to me to stop by my office to get information. That was just Hometown Beverage.
Okay.
So, uh, motion and a second to, uh, accept the minute as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? So moved. Onto, uh, you wanna touch base on the city tax on alcohol? Curry?
Yeah, I just wanted to check in, you know, being new again, um, the protocol for collection. There are some people that pay quarterly, you know, every 30 months, every month. Um, some pay by the year. You know, we just had somebody pay like a dollar and 21 cents because their alcohol was so low for the entire year, the first two months of 2018. So I just wanted to ensure that, uh, the council was all right with collecting taxes at different rates, or if there was a protocol that I should be following in that sense and sending out delinquency letters, if there's any history there, or if that's something that I could speak of outside of council meeting on and consult with the law.
I think the past, we haven't, we usually run around when we approve if they owe anything for the past year. We, we approve it pending that they pay it.
Yeah.
But whether...
All taxes, all the time, have to be paid before they get their, before they get their approval, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we don't, Tom, is it, or Dominic, wouldn't Tom give us a recommendation on how to collect that?
On the liquor piece?
Yeah.
It's not something we've been too involved in, to be honest. I think it's been spearheaded by the clerk. Why don't you let Tom and Curry, Curry and I dive into this, and if we need further direction, we can circle back?
That sounds good.
And so, sure, and that being said, if this second case could also be included in that conversation, I'm happy to do so. Um, there has been a little bit of confusion, a 1% local option tax with two establishments. Um, and, you know, I will do my very best effort to make that clearer, um, through checklists or, you know, initial conversations. You know, it might not be the business owner doing their tax work. It might be their accountant that they might not have known, but there were two that were paying the actual 1% local options tax that is designated. So for the town, for instance, has that, whereas the city does not. And that had been paid to the state, and the state was kind of cutting the check to the town. And so, I'm not sure exactly that whole pattern, the train, where that goes, but they are paying the 1% local option instead of the city ordinance tax. So I just wanted to mention that those issues were resolved, and so everybody is all good to go there. Um, so everyone's happy, but I just wanted to bring that up, if there were history there.
Just for our education, that's, those are two separate taxes.
They are two separate taxes, yes.
Okay.
And sometimes when you get your receipt, you'll notice, if you go somewhere to eat, it'll say 1% local option tax, but if you look, it's 1% on only the alcohol. So sometimes that messes, I've gotten a couple calls about that.
Right, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a great letter that goes out with the renewals, um, but I bet I could probably add in addition to that, you know, ensuring to pay the, the tax and differentiate it, perhaps. I did speak with Vermont Department of Taxes, and they had a suggestion to add it to, add the City of St. Albans to the website. You know, there's a list of all participating municipalities for the 1% local option. And at the bottom, they have an example, you know, perhaps the City of Rutland or the City of Burlington pay, has a separate tax. And I would have to take a look at the wording of it, because it says to collect their own local meals, entertainment, and lodging taxes, but it doesn't mention alcohol specifically. So I would, that could be something that I'd share with you, or you can take a look on the website, and I can send that to everyone. But, you know, that's something that we could add in, though I'm not sure how much of assistance that would be to local business owners, if they would even check there, but I just thought it would be helpful.
You had mentioned the checklist for the application. That's not, nothing exists like that now?
Well, so on the initial letter, um, it says the city's liquor control ordinance licenses are required to provide the following documents with their renewal forms, any change in management contact info, declaration page for proof of liability insurance, and, uh, copy of their establishment's annual prior safety inspection.
Can you just put that in a checklist form?
Yeah, so, and I can help with, and it says in a paragraph, you know, we need it by this office by such and such date, in order to have such and such approval. But perhaps I could kind of lay it out for them with the dates next to what they...
The first one's a state requirement, but the other two are requirements based on our new ordinance.
Okay. And they do receive the ordinance when they do get their initial application, but, you know, anything to clarify it for them. But that's, that's all I have for that.
Moving on to other business.
So this is just a preference question. Um, I'm more than happy to continue... So this is just a preference question, um, I'm more than happy to continue printing out the papers, but I wondered if, um, the actual applications, you needed them for the meeting, if you liked having them, if they're helpful, or if I can send everyone a PDF, um, the email if they wanted to kind of further review, but I'm not, again, I don't know the history and what is helpful.
I'm a strong, I, I'm a strong push for less paper, so, um, I'm also a strong push for no packets at all, obviously, but, um, I'm okay with PDF, that's how I get it. Others, Michael?
I, I get all mine electronically, I'm not going to, I'm okay electronically.
Okay, and I'm more than happy to continue to print out the spreadsheets, you know, this way you can kind of.
Yeah, we always have that, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, all right, great.
And then you have the inclusion of a checklist when sending applications.
Yes.
So that would kind of be touched on, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Motion to move out of liquor control?
Second.
Second by Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It's always, moving out of liquor control? And, uh, reconvening with the, uh, council meeting, working on item number seven. Second reading, public hearing on amendments, Chip Sawyer.
To review these changes would, um, bring our subdivision rules more in line with the enabling state statute that deals with subdivisions by having all processes or all applications that would take one lot and create two, or two lots and create three, but where an additional lot is created, which is technically what a subdivision is, those would go before the Development Review Board, and then boundary line adjustments and mergers, which don't create a new lot but do adjust lots, um, those could be considered by the zoning administrator, those plats could be signed by the zoning administrator, and it also removes a provision from the definition of subdivisions in the land development regulations, uh, that's basically said that any time a parcel has more than one principal building, you automatically have to consider it a subdivision, which doesn't reflect other changes we had made to the land development regulations. But starting in, um, if you go to the page where it says page one of five on the bottom, that's where the actual changes are, and you see at the middle of the page where the definition of subdivision is adjusted to remove that piece about having two principal structures automatically being considered a subdivision, and then if you keep moving down, you look at the changes to Article Eight and Section eight oh one, we are just making the changes within the existing language to differentiate between the subdivisions, and then these administrative lot revisions that would, the administrative lot revisions are the boundary line adjustments and the mergers, um, and then at the end, near the end, page three of five, um, uh, it is at four of five, prior to plat recording, this eliminates a provision that had always annoyed our DRV chair, which forced her to sign work that the DRV hadn't actually seen, and it's nice to finally clean that piece up, so if the DRV approves a subdivision plat, the DRV chair will sign that plat, if Dave approves a boundary line adjustment for which you also need to prepare a plat, Dave can sign that plat, he doesn't have to go to the DRV chair and have her sign something that she never even considered. Um, but by and large, all of the strikeouts and additions are associated with really creating this new title, administrative lot revision, putting all those processes where they need to be in our Article Eight, having all subdivisions, um, specifically with the standards of subdivisions applied to them.
Motion to adopt the amendments concerning subdivisions.
Second, second by Chad. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. So you need this signed?
Yeah, I'll pass this around.
And we're going to keep you up here for the, for the pool study, feasibility study. Kelly, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for joining us. Sorry, Chip took so much of your time ahead of you.
It's doing a good job.
So you will, who wants to address it first?
Well, I can tee it up, but we, um, reviewed our city pool feasibility study, or we interviewed it with the council a few months ago, since then, we've put the study out for a bit, um, using the qualifications process, we chose Western and Sampson, they've done work with the city before, and they've done some great work on pools around the region as well, we liked their proposal a lot, and we think they're, uh, they're going to do some good work for us on this project. If you remember, and Kelly can go into more detail on this, but, you know, we need to take a hard look at the city pool, we want to avoid ever having a situation where we can't use it for a year because it's just not usable anymore, and we weren't ready for that, so we are going to ask the, um, consultants for recommendations and budget estimates for repairing the existing pool and equipment, and getting an updated estimate of the potential lifespan with those fixes, um, or constructing a new pool facility with the same features at the existing site, or constructing, constructing a new facility with zero entry, um, at the existing site, or zero entry and perhaps a dome or similar structure to provide for some year-round use on the site, but then also to look at construction of a new pool facility at either the Public Works Facility or the, um, Fonda Site. You might as well look at some of the other city land that could potentially become a pool space if everything fell into place, so don't want to leave that unexplored by this stuff. Um, we received an update on the timeline from Western and Sampson, they hope to have their feasibility report to us in July, there's going to be a site visit at some point this month, once they can, uh, once we can drain the pool, right?
Right, it's still frozen.
So they can, they can get a really good look at it, and then there are a couple other pages on Western and Sampson's qualifications, their approach, the scope, um, and that's about it. Yeah, we have, we could put some pictures on the screen, if anyone wants to see the, you know, some of the aspects of the pool that have, you know, that are causing us worry, but I have a feeling a lot of you have already seen that.
Haven't seen it, but Mike, that was going to be my question for Kelly, what are the, what are the top concerns with the pool as it sits today?
The largest concern is, uh, the deterioration of the wall, uh, the upper wall, like the first twelve or eighteen inches below the stainless steel gutter, um, probably about five years ago, we noticed, you know, it was soft and, and, uh, pulling away, but it was, you know, maybe twenty-four inches, and so we would, you know, that got repaired as much as it could be, uh, and then the next year, you know, maybe there were four or five of those spots, and over the years until opening last spring, pretty much every part of the wall is, is engaged as, as far as, um, as far as deteriorating. Um, the pool company that did a lot of the repair, or did the repairs that replaced the pump and the filter, did some evaluation of the wall, and they brought a drill to, to do some bore and, and core samples, and all they really needed was their screwdriver. Um, in the upper part, the, the bottom, for what we can tell, it looks good, but that's something that they'll determine, um, you know, when they come up and we can get the pool drained.
Didn't they give an indication of why the upper, is that, is water getting down behind?
Water has gotten, in, in between, the water table down there is pretty high anyway in, in that, uh, land, so when our pool is empty, water actually comes into it from, from outside through some of these cracks, over the years that it, uh, you know, the concrete has pulled away, you know, there's high chemicals, it, it deteriorates, and, and that pool's thirty-eight years old.
Useful life is probably about twenty-five.
Right, so I mean, it doesn't really owe us anything at this point, but, um, the, yeah, where, twenty-five to thirty years is probably the life expectancy of a pool, um, built at that time in that manner, and at that time, nearly, I think four or five other municipal pools were built, pretty much the exact same pool, exact same poolhouse, and those pools have, have gone by the wayside.
That's my, that's my train of thought. Anyone else have questions?
I think this is a good opportunity, um, many kids in the city still utilize that, and we talk about some of the ways that we can help reduce crime rate and everything else, this is definitely one of them, uh, definitely designing it so that the most amount of kids can use it, and, and families with very young children can use it, would be great, I don't know if it's, uh, financially feasible, but it would be awesome, um, so it's, it's long, long overdue, so, uh, if, if it were me, I would swing for the fences and then back off things that we have to, but it's, it's a great facility, a lot of kids grew up there, and hope many generations get to again, so.
And we still, I mean, it's not like it's, uh, decreasing in use, we're still a pretty busy place.
Yeah. And the filters were replaced, how long ago?
Four years, five years.
What was that?
Four, four years ago, and everything that was done, uh, then, and those filters and the pump, uh, are all, you know, reusable, I mean, it's not like.
It was, it could be used.
It's about a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment and, and work, uh, whether the pool stays there, or whether it, if it goes somewhere else, all that stuff is.
Still used.
Everybody who looked at, at the pool, uh, during the, the, um, bidding process said that, that the equipment is good, it's, uh, would be used in a new design.
Any other questions? Marie, also?
Also, yeah.
Kelly, thank you, Jim, thank you. So, uh, as part of my report, um, discussed with Dominic the subcommittees and the appointment of individuals, so the two that were discussed were obviously finance and public safety, uh, members to finance would include Tim, Jim, and Mike McCarthy, and public safety, Chad, Marie, and Kate Ladison. Brief description of what each committee would do, um, we need, we don't need a motion on that, Dom, we're good, as long as everyone's good with the committee they're on, everyone's fine with that? Okay?
Public safety met once, they got all their work done in one meeting, I think.
Quite. So the city's that safe?
Yeah.
Good enough.
We got the, the safe, the quality of life issues might take a little time.
Um, so a couple other things that I had on mind, um, I just wanted to share with the council, uh, I'm going to pass around a photo, um, you've heard me talk about a photo contest, this is what I want to get to, uh, I've got a subcommittee, I've spoken to Parks, they want to, uh, they've approved the use of Taylor Park for this purpose, um, basically it would be, in a nutshell, a request for photos, uh, focus on agriculture to go back to the co-op's hundredth year anniversary that we talked about, and, uh, doing a photo contest on that, having a public reception, public vote, uh, take the top fifteen to twenty, find sponsors to blow these up and put them in the park for a period of time, this is all tentative, but period of time for four to forty-six weeks, and then take them down and auction them off, so when you hear discussions of that, that's what that is. Um, a couple other things I had, uh, Kate is, was considering a, a block party, as was Tammy, still looking to do hers, DeFranco and, and her ward, um, have you taken that any further, Kate?
I haven't, I can't decide if we should do it all on the same day, or if the block party should be spread out a little bit throughout the summer, and that's kind of, we're getting people's feedback on that at the moment.
And Kate's been in discussion with Kelly on that as well, relative to utilizing, uh, some of the resources, um, with the rec department, um, I don't want to speak for my wife, but I think we would be, uh, like to consider one as well, up in, uh, Tim and my ward, um, I'm not sure what that would look like, but.
Your house?
I'm looking at you, and I threw you into it, um, so we'll, if there's anyone else, um, it may be worthwhile to have those discussions across the board, because there's going to be some logistical, uh, information, so as we move forward, we can talk about that.
And I'm going to actually meet for things tomorrow at NMC regarding, um, this concept, regarding just the whole concept, yes.
Oh, good. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, um, uh, I've been in touch with the green up campaign in Moncrief, and I think, uh, the city's ripe for a little more green up activity, um, so I'm going to get, uh, on this announcement at the city school, I'm going to be handing out bags, uh, the Friday before, and try to engage some families to get more involved in the green up around the city, so, um, I know that many of you, I think you man a station for green.
Yeah, on Green Day.
Fourteen Star does, Kate, have you?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get the word out, let people know where to pick the bags up, uh, try to, uh, do a handout at city school as well, and just, um, try to engage a few more people relative to that, so.
Great.
I don't know that I had anything else, um, so we'll move on to number thirteen, which is, um, Tom, if you want to step forward for the approval of certificate of project completion.
You mean, uh, twelve?
Oh, twelve. Oh, all right, all right, you can't, hold on. Sorry about that, I crossed it off, but.
Plan twelve is related to the wastewater plant, um, the, the final federal and state loan packages are, are basically side sealed and delivered, um, this just ensures that we have a little bit of a look back period prior to construction, so that if there's any miscellaneous costs, um, that we incurred beforehand, that we can get them reimbursed for the, to the loan grant packages, uh, we've had, um, from the state's perspective, we're actually on our fifth loan, every time we get a little increase, um, it just rolls into the same loan, um, and the first four loan for, for engineering, the fifth loan is for the engineering plus their financing portion of the construction, in the middle, there were a few costs that were not specifically engineering permitting, things like that, so this ensures that we can get ourselves reimbursed for those costs.
Motion to approve the declaration to reimburse offenses through indebtedness.
Setting.
Second by Kate, any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? So moved. Thank you, Tom.
Sure, the second piece before you, uh, is related to neighborhood sidewalks, um, anytime you borrow money from the bond bank, you've got to comply with, um, all the legal means post issuance, and if you don't, you're potentially subject to, uh, some sort of fines, um, by, uh, in essence, by the feds, um, so this is related to the first long-term million dollar borrowing that was executed, um, about a month ago, um, because we spent more than a million dollars, um, this portion was completed essentially in day one, the minute that was all signed and sealed, the cash came out of the door for the city, so we can now do the project completion, um, over the summer, we expect to go to the bond bank again for a year or two of the project, um, probably in the range of one point seven five to two million, and pulls it all out in a year or two, so that a couple more of these come in over the next two years, but this is just part of the post issuance compliance that we have to do.
Motion to approve certificate of project completion.
Second.
Any other questions?
So this just says substantially completed, so there are a few little things that still need to be cleaned up, right?
Uh, no, it's the standard language from the bond bank, this, this just pertains to the first million dollars, we've actually spent closer to a million and a half, um, so that part is done.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll circulate from over here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So moved. Thank you, Tom. On your, at your seat, you had a, um, some.
First, I want to apologize for whatever I did to land at number fourteen on the agenda. I thought it was health medical order, but then I see Tom jumped in front of me, so I'm not sure exactly what the process was, but, Mr. Medigee was going to try to join us, I told him he was on the agenda, at about eight fifteen, but we're running early. I told him he was on the agenda, about 8:15, but we're running early, so we'll hit the ground, and if he pops in, he can speak to it as well. This is a project that Jay Midgley and a partner have purchased the old Bernal Building on Lake Street. Jay owns, is a partner in about probably a dozen properties in the city within the last year. He's bought a lot of residential properties that he's in the process of fixing up and stuff. So this was a, a building he bought about a year ago. You can see the concept, you can see the present picture, and then the concept he's proposing. Here's Jay now. Good timing. Come on in, Jay.
Thanks for coming, Jay.
Thanks for having us.
So we had Laz Skangis do some design work, worked with Jay and his partner on the concept for the building. It's creating two storefronts and taking down the wonderful blue clapboard that's up there now. It's also taking down all the brick and replacing it heat. Jay can speak to the historical tax credits that he's applied for and received through the state. He has a quote, between the brick work and the facade work, it's coming in at about $120,000 project, it looks like right now. We've done a couple of different facade grants where we've done labor, provided labor while the property owner has provided the materials. This one here, we're proposing capping the labor and offering a grant of $40,000 to help with the 120,000 project cost. It's obviously having a huge impact in that block, being right across from the hotel, will, I think, certainly improve that area.
Are the signs the actual businesses?
No, those are just placeholders.
You mentioned, remove the brick.
So all the white brick is coming down, and they're going to evaluate the structure from there, and make any repairs they need to make, and then install new white brick back on the building. That's part of the historical tax credit.
Correct.
Is it, needs to stay white. They've done asbestos testing on it.
That's not a painted, painted brick.
It's a glazed brick. It's a speckled glazed brick, so if you look at it, it's kind of a whitish background and then a dark colored speckle. Gives it a kind of a gray appearance from far.
What's the durability of that, Jay?
As far as I know, it's gonna be pretty durable. It's a similar brick that's, what's on there right now, that's a, that's a glazed brick from god knows when.
Kiln rock, in, in that way, it's not chipping or stuff like that in the weather, yeah.
They've done all the asbestos testing, that's come back negative, thank goodness. They were worried about maybe some asbestos in the water, and that's come back negative. So it's also including new windows and stuff, and Jay, if, I don't know if you want to speak to the repairs and the stuff you've done interior upstairs?
Yeah, if you guys have any specific questions, feel free to stop me or fire away. Over the past year or so, we've been kind of slowly upgrading the interior apartments upstairs. Gotten all new tenants with the exception of one, so we've kind of upscaled the quality of tenant in that building as well, the fixtures and everything themselves. As far as the downstairs, the unit out back, we've renovated, we have professional office space back there. It's been occupied for about a year now, six months to a year. So this is the last part of the project, is, is this facade and then the interior corresponding units with it. So we want to get the facade done, and then we're gonna start looking for appropriate tenants. Once the building looks a little better from the exterior, we can attract the quality tenants that we want. As far as fit up and interior goes, it's gonna be tenant-dependent, so we don't really have an idea of how, how far that's gonna go, but you can kind of see in the drawings the basic layout of the interiors at this point.
What's the size of those two?
One side is about 1,600, the side on the east, and then the west side unit is about 12 to 1,300.
The only thing I'd point out is on the, as you look at the photo concept, the door on the west end is actually gonna move up to where that window is, and if you, you can see on the, on the plans that Laz had provided, where that window is gonna actually, where that door is gonna land. It was just as a result of, I think, a previous concept, one of the original designs of that building had a door there, so they were trying to replicate as close as they could.
Are we able, I was gonna say, are we able to, are you able to make that, that side handicap accessible with the, with the grade of the sidewalk?
At this point, we're keeping the units one big unit, so there is a pass-through, so we'll have handicap access ramp at the rear of the building, and that will give access to both sides.
Okay.
So, and if, and when we decide to look at and split in the units, we would address that at that point.
Okay.
We're looking for one tenant at this point, I think.
If you're saying that door is there, Marty, right, today?
What's that?
The door is there.
On the upper side, yeah.
What's on the upper side?
Yeah.
What's the timeline?
Masonry work, we're looking at four to six weeks, and then general carpentry, probably another month to six weeks on that, so hopefully 12 weeks.
And Richie was hoping to start his work on the brick this week. We've taken down that light to protect that. And there's gonna be some, we're gonna probably divert the pedestrian traffic around that from the top of the street and from Dana's, since there's nothing in the lower building. And then we'll do some in-kind services, provide truck for the brick removal and stuff like that, but...
Any impact on traffic flow?
It shouldn't be, there, there may be some in that lane, in that turning lane. They may have to stack a little further up, but trying to get Richie in and out of there as quickly as possible is the key.
How much should we have in that fund, fund, Dom, for facade grants?
I haven't looked at it in a while.
Any idea what the balance is?
Tom?
I guess a member of a 150, right?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion to approve the facade grant for ten Lake Street.
Second. By Chad. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Still moved?
Thank you, Marty. You've lucked out.
Moving on to warrants for 323.
Motion to approve, 32318.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose? Warrants approved for 32318.
Motion approved minutes, 31218.
Second. By Chad. Any corrections, changes in the minutes? I did have two earlier, but I gave them to Kristen. Basically, they touched on my comments relative to what, just clarifying a couple things, but she has those, so. Any others? Okay, so all those approved, the minute is adjusted. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Other business?
One quickly.
Yep.
Is there any way that the city could offer community service-type activities for the high school and prepare a list of those?
Sure. And share with the high school?
We've done it. They, we've had students reach out and look for stuff to now, and I know it hasn't given them projects, and they've done the projects.
I, I saw this from every month, too, for events and, and stuff going on, and like cleaning the transports and stuff.
Yeah. I don't know how many times people ask me, is anything in the city moving for my son or my dog?
As long as it asks, well, yeah.
Yeah. And I always say, geez, we must have something, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff, and we do, we're getting more and more of this, because they...
Yeah. Excellent, thanks.
Anyone else on the, other business?
I got a bunch by the way.
Wait for, to be last?
Yeah.
The one I have, Marty and I have talked about this, I've been city hall twice this week, walking back over Main Street. One individual is pounding on windows when cars fall in spots, panhandling, I think, intimidating people from getting out of their cars.
That's my guy. That's gotta be my guy.
Yeah.
Same, same guy.
Same guy, yeah, so, and, I, I, I mean, I'm around the town all the time, I see him in the parking garage, I see him on Main Street, and Marty, I don't know if you reached out to...
He actually called, got me today, but he called me sir, today. Sir, thanks for eating from me.
Did it work? If you, the only thing I would say in the, until we get a better solution, is if you see him doing that, call dispatch, and, and they will respond. He's got a no trespass order against probably 95% of the businesses. He's got a no trespass order in the garage, parking garage, so if you see him in there, definitely call.
Yeah, I've seen him in the shopping center parking lot. I think he's, I think he's become a little more brazen knocking on windows, you know, before he'd catch you on the sidewalk, but he doesn't let you get out of the car now. And I think for all the work that's been done in downtown, that, that can be a deterrent for, like I said, two women getting out of a car where, where stopped in their tracks, so...
Do we know where, where, does he have housing? Do we know that?
I don't know anything about him.
He's usually around every morning, though, in the morning.
I believe he's living out on Upper Weldon.
So, so we're, we're having a discussion, Marty, myself, and Dom, potentially pulling Jim Hughes into the discussion and see what can be done, if anything. So we will report back on that further, but it is an ongoing problem.
Chad? Okay, just a couple of quick things. Building down at Holton Park on the east side, someone has ripped off some of the siding. It's, it's like concrete boards, so it's all busted up. So if someone gets some T-111 and just patches that, I've got the paint, and I can paint it. And Holton Park again, I know the graffiti walls have been a big hit in Swanton, and I had mentioned it before, so I'm thinking maybe we can bring that up again to the arts commission. I would love to see one. I'll, I'll pay for it and set it up if I can. So just a four-by-each sheet of plywood, and some four-by-fours. And then the last thing is, a while back, someone had brought up the suggestion of possibly a 1% meals and rooms tax to help pay for like sidewalks and stuff like that, and I did bring it up to Tim and Dom, and we thought maybe later on, when things have settled down a little bit, that's a possibility, maybe, what was it, alcohol or something like that, that we might be able to, with it stipulated that it goes for sidewalks and community infrastructure projects. So hopefully to bring that up sometime in the next year.
You reminded me of something. The parking garage has graffiti on it. The west, sorry, east side entrance, I noticed it this morning.
I took a photo and passed it on to Marty, and Marty, you've had multiple locations?
Yeah, it got hit this weekend along with probably a dozen other places.
You have cameras on it, don't you?
What would be the...
We got cameras everywhere.
What would be the repair for the parking garage? Is that paintable, is that...
Well, we're gonna, we've got this...
Removable.
Material that color, it's not, and it removes probably 90% of it with a fresh washer, so we're gonna try that. Weather dependent, unfortunately, so we got a warm day here.
The sooner you do it, the better. I mean, like, within days.
The doughboy had a bunch of graffiti last year, and we used it on that, we got 98% of that.
I did a, I did a building once on Catherine Street, I think you were coming out.
That place?
Yeah, the stuff that was only there for like a week came right off, but the stuff that had been there for a few months, you could, no, you couldn't take it off.
But even the stuff that comes off, does it leave a shadow?
It fades.
It fades open on?
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends. The, the doughboy did, because they did the whole side, but not there, you could do that section, I think, so.
So we had, I don't know if you got calls on it, Kelly, but the brick wall heading into Aldous Hill was hit again after it was cleaned.
Just recently?
It's been probably three or four weeks now. We just can't do anything till the weather changes, but we at Aldous Hill will deal with that again this time, but...
And I had one too, the Little League dugout on the north side, on the Aldous Street side, back of that, it's been...
That was all part of this weekend's.
Yeah.
Michael, anything? Okay. Marie, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, and motion to adjourn, still moved?
It's like...
Thank you all.